I'd like to call this meeting the Waco ISD Board of Trustees to order. A quorum is present. I also want to welcome everyone who is watching this meeting on Waco ISD TV, cable channel 17, or online at wacoisd.org/live. On March 16th, the governor granted a request from the Attorney General to temporarily suspend certain meeting laws in order to allow telephonic or video conference meetings in response to COVID-19. In accordance with those suspended rules, we certify the following. Members of the public may watch this meeting live on WISD TV, Channel 17, on Grande Communications and Spectrum, and online at wacoisd.org/live. Notice that this meeting was posted online for at least 72 hours. To comment on an agenda item, members of the public were instructed in the notice to submit their comments in writing to Joshua Wucher by email by last night at 10:00. Although members of the board are not gathered in a central, physical location, we do have a quorum in attendance at this meeting by video conference. Meeting by the use of the Zoom video conferencing application, which allows for two-way communication. There's no limit to the number of people who can stream the meeting live, online, or watch it live on cable channel 17. All other meeting procedures will adhere to board-adopted procedures to the extent practicable. All items to be discussed or voted on tonight have been posted in accordance with state law. A video recording of this meeting is being made and will be posted on the district's website at a later date. If you have questions about these suspended laws, please contact the office of the Attorney General by calling 888-726-787, or by emailing toma@oag.texas.edu. With that, next is our agenda, is public comments. I understand we have received some, so at this time, I'll hand it over to Josh Wucher to read the comments that we have received for our meeting tonight.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, we do have two comments this evening, one from Haley Nafe. She writes, "Dear Waco ISD Board members and Superintendent Kinkanen, this is Haley Nafe, the Waco High School 2020 graduate, who started the petition for teachers to have the choice for some teachers to teach from school, and for some to teach from home if schools reopen. I have seen Dr. Kinkanen's news interviews and want to say thank you for telling us that some teachers will be able to teach from home. This makes me feel better to know that students aren't the only ones that have the choice to avoid unnecessary exposure. I just want everybody to be as safe as possible while still prioritizing education, whether on campus or from home, and I know you all want to do that too. As of today, July 21st, my petition has 286 signatures, 24 comments, 107 shares. Thank you again for your support of students, teachers, and the well-being of the district." Next message is from Rebecca Rave. She is a special education teacher in the district. She writes, "I want to first say how much I appreciate being a part of the conversation and how much consideration this board has taken for my health and the health of my coworkers. Thank you for making a plan and making sure our voices are heard. I was glad to hear that masks will be universally required, as well as mandatory temperature checks for all staff and students. These are great precautions that I very much support. I was also glad to hear the district wanted to push the start date back, since it seems unsafe to start school right now. What I would like to encourage is that teachers be given trainings during August before our newly scheduled in-service start date, to allow us to start with the same knowledge so that when in-service begins, we are able to make plans. I would also like to encourage the district start at least the first two weeks after Labor Day fully online, to allow for any spike after the holiday to have a chance to pass. After two weeks, I would love to see the district utilize the transition period allowed by bringing back students in stages, perhaps starting with self-contained special education populations, as well as other students deemed most at risk, or another criteria deemed appropriate by the board. This transition could be two weeks as well, meaning all students would have the opportunity to resume at the beginning of October, or at the end of the first grading period. I appreciate the thought you have put into this plan, and I appreciate your time in listening to my thoughts. Thank you." And that will conclude public comment.
Great, thank you. Okay, I was hoping that we'd have everybody online, and I could spare some of you from me reading all of those comments. I see that Mr. Manning's here, Ms. Cordewag, but we're still missing Mr. Dupuy, huh? Josh, you haven't seen?
He did, well, I believe his wife popped on, so...
It's around.
The Zoom was on.
Okay, okay, well, that's good. Okay, so let's go ahead and move forward on the agenda with special recognitions then.
Okay, Kyle DeBeere is going to help me with... There we go. So tonight's special recognitions, we're going to start off with Achieve 3000. A part of Waco ISD's literacy curriculum is a differentiated internet-based program that allows students to read articles at their individual level and test themselves on comprehension, with approximately 100,000 Texas students participating on a daily basis, and approximately 250,000 students participating daily around the world. One student from Mr. Greg Oubre's 3rd grade class at Dean Highland Elementary School earned the highest weekly score in the state in the Achieve 3000 reading program, while another earned the highest weekly score in the world. Achieve 3000 top performers from Dean Highland Elementary School, Anaya Valdez, the top scorer in the state, and Ellen Capatio, the top scorer in the world, for the week of March 2nd to the 6th. Of course, Dean Highland Elementary School 3rd grade teacher Greg Oubre there. Congratulations to him and his students. Next, our Greater Waco Chambers, Waco Under 40 nominees. The Greater Waco Chambers, Waco Under 40 celebrates dynamic young leaders under the age of 40 from our county. The 33 nominees this year represent not only the young leaders who demonstrate a positive impact in their respective industries, but who also go beyond the call of duty by volunteering their personal time to give back to the community and strive to make Waco a better place to live. In its second year, the Waco Under 40 Luncheon, currently scheduled for December 1st, 2020, is an opportunity for the best and brightest from a diverse group of professions and causes to gather and receive much deserved recognition. The event recognizes selected honorees as rising young leaders who have distinguished themselves in their careers and in the community. The selected honorees will be announced at a future date, but we are happy to highlight these three Waco ISD nominees, Kyle DeBeere, Chief of Staff, Lindsay Helton, Principal, Alta Vista Elementary, and Isabel Izzy Weaver, a rising senior from Waco High School. Congratulations to the three of them. Next is our Rise Award for Outstanding Community Partners. Waco ISD's theme for the 2019 to 2020 school year is Rise. That theme celebrates learning and growing, as well as overcoming challenges, and recognizes that no school district rises by itself. Instead, Waco ISD rises when families, employees, and the community join together to realize their shared hopes and dreams for the district's students and their future. Waco ISD is blessed to have scores of community partners who are deeply invested in the district's students and their success. Each month, we recognize a community partner making a difference with the Rise Award for Outstanding Community Partners. This month, the district is recognizing the Waco McLennan County Public Health District. Over the past four months, the staff of the Waco McLennan County Public Health District has worked consistently with our district's staff as a sounding board to identify best practices for the prevention of the spread of COVID-19 in our offices and campuses, as well as provide recommended procedures and guidelines in the event of positive cases within the district. Although the recent pandemic has increased the frequency and depth of the health district's support of and work with Waco ISD, the partnership between the two is not new. Throughout the years, the health district has been integral when cases of infectious diseases have impacted or may impact Waco ISD's staff and students. Additionally, the health district holds SHOT clinics to aid our families with obtaining the required immunizations, including providing immunizations at Family Fest, assisting campus nurses with immunization schedules and records, and providing professional development for nurses on immunizations and communicable diseases. From assisting with communication and procedures to providing professional development and immunizations, the health district has proven a vital partner in navigating health concerns that affect our community, staff, and students. Preparedness Coordinator Stephanie Alvey, and Epidemiologist Lacey Sanders and Brianna Pachter, with some of their other staff members here, accepted the award virtually. We congratulate the Waco McLennan County Public Health District Core Response Team and the rest of the team of the district for being this month's Rise Award for Outstanding Community Partner. And that will conclude our recognitions for this evening.
Okay, Dr. Kinkanen, Superintendent's Report.
Yes, good evening to everyone. It's good to see you all again this week. I do have a few items tonight, and I'll start with the Reading Academies. And I'll try not to go too fast for our interpreters. House Bill 3, which is the bill that was passed during the last legislative session, requires teachers in kindergarten through 3rd grade and all of our elementary principals to attend the Texas Reading Academy within three years. And I just wanted to mention this evening that this month, we had approximately 200 of our teachers, kindergarten and 3rd grade teachers, along with special education teachers, some of our, most of our elementary principals, instructional support staff, and some district-level administrators, working to complete five of the 12 required modules for that training. And so five were done in a full week this month, and then those others will be done throughout the course of a year, and that is done intentionally so that participants have the opportunity to practice what they're learning along the way. That training was provided by ESC 12, and it costs $400 per person. We paid for that with our early childhood education allotment that came with House Bill 3. And in addition, Waco ISD chose to pay our teachers who attended $750 to complete the training. We focused on kindergarten and 3rd grade teachers this summer to make sure that our kindergarten students have a successful launch with reading instruction, and that 3rd graders receive the training as quickly as possible, 3rd grade teachers, in order to impact our student achievement data on STAR. And so we'll go back and pick up the others next summer, but this year, we focused on kindergarten and 3rd grade. Our next item I have is in regards, regard to our theme for next school year, the 2020-2021 district theme. On May 28th, you all approved a new vision and mission statement for Waco ISD. The vision of Waco ISD, I think I need to repeat this evening, is to grow students and staff to create a better future for all. And the mission of Waco ISD is to provide an educational foundation that empowers and values all. So in alignment with our new mission statement and our commitment to equity, inclusion, and success for all students, this year's theme, Waco ISD is empower all, value all. And we're very excited about this theme for the year and believe that by keeping our mission statement in the forethought of our thinking and planning, we can begin to take steps toward fulfilling the mission and ultimately our vision. The artwork that you see on the screen was designed by Waco High School art teacher Hope Gerati. She was a first-year teacher with Waco ISD this past year and has previously been an artist. So we asked her if she would, she would capture the mission statement in art, and this is what she came up with. And I think she did a great job. It reflects the momentum we want for our district to ensure that all of our students graduate from high school and that they're prepared for a better future. As we begin our new school year, each employee will receive a T-shirt with this graphic for the start of the school year, and you all will receive one as well. And we're super excited about this theme. Along with that theme, I want to talk about our administrative retreat, which is scheduled for next Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. And that retreat will provide an opportunity for 130 of our district and campus leaders to apply the concepts of design thinking to this new mission statement. Dr. Julie Shell and Professor Tammy Glass from the University of Texas, who served as our facilitators for three design thinking sessions over the last few months, will use the district's theme of empower all, value all, to focus on the importance of belonging. Our team will discuss the significance of belonging and will be creating strategies for building environments where our children and our staff feel valued. And as a part of that conversation, we will discuss equity and inclusion. Dr. Shell and Professor Glass will also connect the three books that our administrators were asked to read, Power of Moments, Essentialism, and Dare to Lead, all three fantastic books. So I'd just say, in the midst of this pandemic, I'm really excited about getting to spend three days with our school leaders focusing on our foundational values. As we prepare for a school year that will be unlike any other, it's important that we ground every decision that we make in those values. So I'm thankful for that opportunity next week and really looking forward to it. Next item on the Superintendent's Report is feedback from families and staff on the proposed plan for the 2020-2021 school year. And before I move to that, I'd ask if you all have any questions or comments or feedback on the administrative retreat or the theme for the school year. Okay, I'll move along then.
I have a question, sorry, Dr. Kinkanen.
Go ahead, Ms. Cordewag.
The state Reading Academies, I know that we had done those in the past, probably about 10, 12 years ago. Are those what had been done in the past? Is that basically the gist of those?
Yeah, these are newly designed reading academies, and they're focused more on the science of reading instruction and how the brain learns, and in addition to the pedagogy that goes with teaching, teaching reading. So they have revamped those academies, and it has been a while now since those were held. And so I'm particularly pleased that they're focusing on why and the how that the brain learns to really help teachers understand and have that background. It's pretty extensive, 12 modules. Thank you. On Tuesday evening, I hosted a virtual town hall event for our families regarding our plans for next school year, and I'd like to thank all of our staff who assisted with planning and facilitating the event, including members of our communications and bilingual department, and especially our Chief of Staff, Kyle DeBeere. I also want to thank Alfred Solano, the CEO of the Hispanic Chamber, who served as our moderator of the event. If you tuned in, you know that Alfred did a fantastic job. We're truly very appreciative of his time that night. I'm also excited about the high level of engagement from our families. The, it really was a success with 1,779 people participating by phone in English, and 243 people participating by phone in Spanish. In addition, there were 459 people who watched at least part of the event live at wacoisd.org/townhall. And as of this afternoon, more than 5,000 people have watched at least part of the event on Facebook. So we guessed a pretty good net there. During the virtual town hall, we asked families to share whether they were planning to select remote instruction, in-person instruction, or if they were undecided. 44.6% said that they would select remote instruction. 23.2% said that they would select in-person instruction, and the remaining 32.2% did not know which model, instructional model, that they would select for their students. Based on the feedback we received, we know that parents are concerned about the safety of their children, and that they have specific questions regarding logistical details, such as how we will serve meals and transport students to and from school. They also have very specific instructional questions for special areas and programs. And if you listened in, you heard some of those, guaca, special education, budgeted and talented, and athletics. The end of our call, our families had the opportunity to leave us a voicemail message. We received 184 messages with questions and comments about the upcoming school year, and I would say it'll take us a little bit of time to work through all of those messages. And we're still working through the details of all of the logistics for next year, so we perhaps may not have all of the answers to all of the questions at this point in time. And as I explained on the call, what we have provided is an outline for the school year. Going to take us the next several weeks for our team to fill in all of the details. Beginning next Monday, parents will be able to log on to register their children by, for either online or remote instruction. Then we can begin to match students who want to learn remotely with teachers who prefer to teach remotely. Also would mention that the day of the virtual town hall, our local health authority issued an order preventing schools serving students in pre-K through 12 from holding in-person classes before September 8th. Understandably, our families had questions about whether the order would affect our plans, and the short answer to that is that that order does not impact the plans that we had already been formulating. Last week, before the order was issued, I recommended that we delay school until Tuesday, September 8th. Tonight, later in the agenda, I'll be asking you to consider the revised academic calendar to implement that recommendation. The calendar that I'm proposing is fully consistent with the order issued earlier this week by the local health authority. I've also been watching to see what other districts in the area and across the state are doing. Primarily, what I have seen so far is that districts are either starting remotely in the middle of August, in keeping with their calendars that they had previously adopted, and then transitioning to in-person instruction after Labor Day. And some, and more, are beginning to start in-person, have their start date after Labor Day, as well as provide that in-person option as a part of their calendar after Labor Day. So because we heard from our families and our teachers that the transitions were hard that we had in the spring moving from one platform to the next, we think that beginning remote instruction, remote and in-person instruction at the same time after Labor Day provides the greatest consistency for our families and the smoothest start overall. And I think those families who choose in-person instruction will have their, their choice will be implemented with that beginning after Labor Day. Of course, we all know the situation is fluid, and we will need to continue to be flexible. And if the number of cases of COVID-19 continues to rise and things do change, we may find it necessary to begin instruction remotely. That's six weeks away, if you think about Labor Day and September 8th, the first day of school. So I'd like to stay on course with our plans and then revisit if necessary as we get closer. And that's all I have, and be happy to answer any questions that you have. And I do, we do have the calendar item later, as well as a couple of other items related to our plan to offer remote and in-person instruction.
Madam President?
Yes, yes.
Dr. Kinkanen, you mentioned numbers at the very beginning about, is how many parents were listening in on the phone call in English, and the number was just garbled for me, so I was just curious about what that number was again?
Sure, let me read those again. We had 1,779 people who participated in English, and we had 243 people participating in Spanish. And we did have a Spanish option for anyone who logged on and selected it. Grace Benson, our bilingual director, was our interpreter. And then we also had 459 who watched the town hall event live, and then we had more than 5,000 people who actually watched at least a part of the event on Facebook.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Both of the, the calendar and the plan are on our agenda, so we can talk about both in more detail if no one has any other questions for Dr. Kinkanen. I will say, I was quite impressed at your willingness to answer any question that came in. And the other thing that really impressed me is the scope. It seems like the questions were all really, they were all really, they hit on different areas that where you're working on, but they were really detailed and thoughtful questions. And it seemed like, wow, in an hour, you were able to address a lot of different issues. And that just being from calls that were made during the hour. I was impressed at the breadth, I guess, of topics that you were able to...
Yeah, thank you. I think that it, the town hall demonstrates how complex the work is that we do, and it's, education is personal. It's personal to each and every student and family. And like I said, we have a lot of details to work through, and for, what we want to accomplish now is to put the big plan out there and, and begin then to fill in the details and to be able to move the work along. And so making this decision and moving forward this evening is really important to us, so thank you for that.
Oh, yes, somebody?
It's me.
Okay.
Sorry about that. Dr. Kinkanen, I, yeah, I wanted to say thank you for taking time to do that. I know that right now, with things being super fluid, the plans have to change or shift, and I think when you said that education is personal, I think you taking time to really answer questions from parents is needed and necessary. And I agree with Mrs. T. Cool that these parents are, their questions were very valid and insightful and thoughtful in concerns, not only with their own students, but students within the district. And so I just wanted to thank you for, in a very busy schedule, leaving up, for taking time to do that. And I think those opportunities to listen to parents and to talk to them, I know as a board member, hearing the plan and hearing some of the details puts me a little bit more at ease. So I can only imagine parents as they're wrestling through a myriad of choices and complexities, also with their own family, that when you taking time to be able to answer those questions for them, I would say put them at ease also. Again, the situation has not changed. There's very little that is known, but I think the hem is attached. There's very little that is known, but I think the human touch is really important. So thank you for doing that.
You're very welcome. Thank you, Mrs. Cordway.
Okay, let's see. I think Dr. Gutierrez, you are up next regarding administrator contracts.
Consent agenda?
Consent.
I skipped consent. It was, it's a page and a half, so I had to, I moved it off my screen. I'm sorry.
Madam President, I move that we accept, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Sykes, for pointing it out and for the motion. Anybody wish to make a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Vedanya. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Yes.
Aye.
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 Okay, hearing and objection, it passes unanimously. Now, Josie.
Yes.
Item six, okay, thank you.
Good evening, Madam President and Board of Trustees. This evening, I have the honor of recommending Mrs. Areli Lopez for Assistant Principal of Providence Heights Elementary School. Mrs. Lopez has spent the last seven years in Waco ISD, where she currently works at Crestview as an instructional specialist, and she also served as a bilingual teacher there. She has her master's from Texas A&amp;M University and College Station in school administration and bilingual education. And something interesting about Mrs. Lopez is she attended Waco ISD schools from kinder through 12th grade. She was actually a student at Providence Heights herself, and she graduated as a Waco High School Lion. And so we're very proud of presenting to you Mrs. Areli Lopez, and I recommend that you approve her administrator's contract tonight.
Thank you, that's exciting. So is Ms. Lopez the only one tonight?
Yes, ma'am.
So that being the case, I will entertain a motion in a second.
I move that we approve the contract as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Cordway.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Houston. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, passes unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, I see Mr. Sturzinger. He must be ready to discuss the schematic design for Paul Tyson Field Replacement Project.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
You were on the road somewhere last time, right?
No, last time I was here, but two months ago, I was on the road, so.
Yeah, all the days just kind of get smashed together, sorry.
The whole year has gotten smashed together, so.
Yes, it has, yes, okay.
So very excited to follow up last month's presentation. As you recall, we presented a draft schematic design or a progress set of schematic design. And so over the month, Ms. Grayson, who's joining us here as well, is from our team, has really helped usher this to the end of schematic design. So there is a presentation, if y'all wouldn't mind pulling that up.
One second, do that.
All right. And so as we look at that, and we'll go to the second slide, really, the project, as you know, has been focused on relocating the stadium that is currently on McLennan County property and pushing that towards, as that interchange to support the venue project occurs, to support the movement amongst those parcels. So you see that initial idea right here on this slide, the location of Paul Tyson's in red. And then as we look at it, you'll see two properties there in white that would become Waco ISD property as well. So we're really looking to have looked over the last month, or last months really, at exploring the design of this and how that impacts our students, providing that best opportunity for athletic, that includes working with the campus staff as well as Coach Love as well. So as you go to the next slide, this slide highlights the interchange of properties that are currently being proposed. So you'll notice on the right side of the slide, there's a list of properties, and then in gray is who is the current owner of those properties. And eventually, the area that is not shaded out, so the area at the north, the current Waco High School property, the area northwest of it, and then the area shown in red, will eventually transition here over the next, hopefully, few months to Waco ISD property. And that will ultimately replace the land taken over by Paul Tyson and also expand the physical boundary of Waco High School. We covered this over the, back in December about the various options, and ultimately identified that this provides the best option as we moved it towards the long-term focus of Waco High School property. So then the question becomes is, how do we start using this property? And how do we really create a new Paul Tyson Field? And so this is the end result, the final schematic design drawing of moving forward with that design. So located in the center of the image, you'll see kind of the dark, the lime green area with the red track. That really is the feature of a new turf and track field system that would support 2,000 seats in the grandstands on the north side. There's option for future expansion on the south side of the track and field. It would be a full synthetic field, the eight-lane, 400-meter track. And then we've located the entrance at the northwest corner of that side to really highlight and create a presence on the street. So as you're approaching Paul Tyson Field, you really get a sense of entry and approach and acceptance into the site. And so that would be the ticket concession restroom building. And then that area is replacing or locating, just like baseball and softball practice fields are located at. So you'll see those featured in the top left of the drawing or the northwest corner. Here in that location, we're looking to put in fields that would meet the basic needs for high school practice, because most of the games would be played at the central stadium. But both of these fields would have the opportunity in the future to become competition fields with the addition of a grandstand, press box, those type of elements to be able to support it. To the right of Paul Tyson, back to the center, you'll notice there are football practice fields. We're looking at having one to one and a half practice fields in that location, balanced with the amount of parking that would be needed. That would be a natural turf field, and that would augment at the bottom left, so at 44th and Colcor, the practice, practice field that would remain in place there at that time. The final element of this project would be the athletic lockers that are currently on the Paul Tyson Field. And you'll notice there are two red squares, and we'll go a little bit more detailed here in a second, that represent the areas within the existing Waco High School property that we're renovating to be able to support the students that are currently located off the main high school property. So basically, we're bringing all the athletes and students onto the Waco High School property locker rooms, making sure that they have a safe and secure zone to play from. So on the next slide, you'll see, as we zoom in really into the entry of the Paul Tyson Field, so this is at the corner of 44th and Trice, we're proposing a new anchor building that would really set off the corner. So there really is an approach and a plaza as you come in, so as fans are being greeted, you have the opportunity to get your ticket and then walk into the facility, be able to check into the facility. And then on the other building, you would notice then there's a wealth of restrooms that would be there to support the 2,000 seats of occupants there. So roughly double the amount of women's that there are men's to meet building code. And then as well, we have complimentary storage and concession in that facility. And so of course, what does this look like as you enter? The next slide really gives a glimpse of what the vision of that view would be from Trice. So the two buildings pulling from the architecture and the colors currently at Waco High School, using some of the elements of red and the buff-colored brick, and really creating that sense of presence and entry as you come in. Building. And then in between those two buildings, you'll notice then a covered area that really kind of creates that prominent image in the front, but also then doubles as support for ticket and concession once you're inside the facility, which you really get a sense of on the next slide, of what it feels like from the field side. So here, as an athlete standing on the track or field, you would have access to the grandstands on the right side of the image, but then there's an area then to come in, restrooms would be on the left, entry directly center of the image, and ticketing or concessions there on the right side of the image. So you have that opportunity not only for game day activities, but Coach Love and the Waco High School staff expressed interest that that gives them a place to meet out of the sun and in the shade for an everyday practice event as well. We're working through security and access between the two, so you'll see some suggestions of fencing around to be able to really augment that environment and ultimately create that beautiful new home for Paul Tyson Stadium. Other element, if you want to go to the next slide, that I mentioned was the locker rooms. So here, you'll just see that really we're focusing in on renovations. These are locker rooms as we tour the facilities and talk with the coaches of how we're supporting the students, went through a detailed locker count and occupant count, how many students are within each program, and ultimately identified these two locations, one within the old gymnasium and one within the old weight room that we could renovate and in essence, intensify the locker rooms within these zones to be able to support the Waco High School athletes. And if you go to the next slide, timing. Then of course, important much as I mentioned with the football stadium, the Paul Tyson Field taking over the baseball softball field. So right now, what we're working to target with on land transfers is the first thing that would be constructed is the baseball softball field at the northwest property. And that we would construct that, look to construct that this fall, so that when the baseball season starts, softball season starts, they would have access to fields local to Waco High School rather than having to transport. If that isn't able to work out from a timing standpoint, we may have to look at some entering busing of students for practice on days that are used. If the season stays as it is currently planned, and you IL comes forward with those things. So that would be first. The second element then would be the main Paul Tyson Field that we can start construction shortly thereafter in the fall of 2020 or through fall of 2021, targeting, so when school starts August of 21, there would be a new Paul Tyson Field that they could use their field, track, and the football facility. And then finally, the last element would be the locker room renovations. So summer of 21, we would work to not disrupt students as much as possible, that we would go in and renovate the locker rooms. Tentatively, you'll see one final date on there, summer of 22, for what is currently identified as Lake Air Little League. So right now, we're in discussions with the city on the timing of how that land swap would occur, how that works with their, the constructions of the new Lake Air Little League that would, in this drawing, happen north of Trice in this image. And then finally, would be cost. And so right now, we've done a more detailed estimate of the anticipated cost for the project as we work through these different elements, as well as gotten some validation from local contractors in the area, and have confirmed that, yes, we're still on budget for the total project cost of $9.5 million. Here, you'll see the bottom line at $9,411,000. So we're looking good for scope and schedule and time with this. And so with that, I will take any questions that you have for the project, and thank you for your time.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Sut.
Yeah, this is an excellent schematic, Jared. I applaud the efforts pulling all these elements together. You're really presenting a good story here. In the, in the prior schematics that we've seen, concentrating on space again, I'm wondering, because we've seen before, terminology in your world, not mine, but we used to see, I think, allocated space for, you know, high jump area, pole vault, discus, shot put, that were separate apart from the track and the field areas that are defined there. Plus, we had a significant portion that was allocated to, I guess, what would be termed a drainage collection pond? Is that no longer required?
So both of those are required, and we are working through those details right now. They're not shown on the current schematic. Right now, I believe we're looking at pole vault at the far left side of the drawing, looking at creating a chute at one of the ends of the lanes for long jump, triple jump, and then we would have two shot put rings as well as one discus field as well, or discus cage, to be able to support that. So we are providing a full track and field system to be able to support meets at this case, so that has been discussed. And then regarding drainage and detention, right now, we're in discussion and have started talking with City of Waco regarding stormwater management. I put it under that category. And so what we are looking at is that the track and turf itself would work as stormwater detention, and we would work through the orifice that would let water out from there. So it will not adversely impact the field and the use of the field, but would then also not take up land. We're basically maximizing that system that we're putting in place. We are discussing water quality needs and those kind of things as well, but absolutely those will be things that we address during this project.
So at this point, through this schematic phase, you're confident that all those provisions will have adequate space from a design, schematic, and implementation standpoint?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Anybody else? Yes, Jared, were you going to say something?
I was just going to say, well, again, we appreciate the opportunity to work with Waco, so we're continuing through the design process and will work ultimately, I believe, towards a competitive seal proposal process here over the next couple of months. And so probably the end of third quarter of this year, we would look to bring back bids for approval for the Waco ISD team.
Oh, good, okay.
So moving quite quickly here.
Yeah, that's good news.
Angela?
Yes.
I have an issues at my house with technology and internet service, apparently. I can't get the agenda to load on any of my devices. What I'm wondering, what are we, are we making a decision tonight on this?
We're, we're on the schematic design, yes.
Okay, okay. Also, I guess I just, the 9.4 million, or roughly $9.5 million, I don't remember what our budget, when did we budget for that, or when did we come up with a budget for that, Jared?
So I believe it was the February meeting, we had presented the capital improvement project list, and there were about 10 projects on there. The board had identified that that was the highest priority moving forward. Ms. Davis had identified that that was something that I believe Fund Balance could afford or take on.
Got you, okay.
And it was money that should be coming from the county as well to help offset.
There you go.
Well, there's, yeah, I was trying to remember, about 2.4 million, was that?
That is correct.
Yeah, okay. Maybe they'll find some more money laying around. Thank you, Jared.
You're welcome.
Okay, anybody have anything else for Jared before we let him go? Okay, all right. Thank you, Jared. Thanks for your work. Thanks for working with Coach Love and the athletic department, the high school. It's a, you're making it look so simple.
Absolutely. So I've got a great team behind me too, and y'all have a great team too.
Thank you. Okay, let's see. Okay, now we, let's see. Dr. Kincaid, is there a reason we've split up items eight?
We need to take a vote on the Paul Tyson Field Replacement Project.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm just moving on. I, I'm, my technology is I keep having to switch screens, so my apologies. Yes, so I'll entertain a motion to accept the schematic design as presented. Anybody wish to make that motion?
I move that we approve the schematic design for the Paul Tyson Field Replacement Project as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Cordway, a second?
Second.
Second.
Hmm. I'm going to give that to Mr. Vedanya, because I saw him first. Is that me, Ellen? Or Carrie, it's Carrie, sorry. Okay, Mr. Vedanya, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Hearing none, passes unanimously. All right, now you can go, Jared. Thank you. Good night. Good night. Okay, all right, so then Dr. Kincanon, we do need to, we need to consider eight and then nine before 10? Is that the idea?
Each one needs a separate vote. We've posted them as such, but I can explain all three and then you can, you all can handle the business if you like.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Go ahead.
Okay, so the first item there is the calendar and we have, I've spoken to that last week and again this evening already. You have that in front of you. This, I do want to point out that the first day of school would be September the 8th. As I mentioned before, that is after Labor Day. We do plan to start with the option of remote or in-person instruction and again, that's fluid and we have six weeks to see how things develop and we can, we can make a change if we need to there. But we do want to go ahead and get parent selections and we would open up the registration process on Monday and I want to encourage all of our families to make that selection as soon as possible because it impacts our staffing and we want to be able to match up our students with our teachers who might need to or prefer to work remotely. This calendar does include, does extend the school day by 15 minutes and that gives us a buffer of time in the event that we have to close school for any reason, COVID. We've provided you with an updated version so that you can see those school start and end times there on the actual document and parents will be able to see that as well. It gives us a few, a few extra days at the beginning to work with our staff, which is really an important part of all of this because we want to do a really great job for our students and our families when they come back, especially for those families who are remote. And then other than that, there are no sweeping changes. The Thanksgiving break is the same, Christmas holidays are the same, and spring break is the same. So that's my recommendation for the instructional calendar. That's the first item. The second item is the ratification of stipends for our teachers for the technology professional development. As I mentioned last week, our teachers are taking four days of technology professional development and we've offered them a $500 stipend to do that. They're being trained in Google and CSOW, our elementary learning management system, and Canvas, the secondary learning management system. And that was, that has been offered to approximately 985 classroom teachers and approximately 155 teachers at our Transformation Waco campuses. And that total cost of that is $492,500 approximately, which would be paid from our federal Title I funds. And so we're asking that you ratify that. And then the last item, which moves us forward to planning for the next school year, is the approval of the asynchronous remote instruction plan, authorizing the superintendent to make any attestations and submit the plan to the Texas Education Agency. So basically we have to, we've had to select the kind of remote instruction that we want to provide for our students. We're, we're selecting asynchronous, which means that we have some flexibility of how and when that instruction is delivered versus synchronous, which means we would have, students would have to be logged on for three hours straight at the elementary, or three hours total in a day at elementary and four hours at the secondary level to be counted for attendance purposes. We don't want to do that. We want to do asynchronous, which gives us the flexibility to be face-to-face on a educational platform, but also allows us other options for counting attendance, such as students being logged on to their learning management system. So you might have heard the question the other night about that. And we, we can give some flexibility for parents in the evening to be able to work with their students in an LMS with an asynchronous model. So that's what we're recommending. It's a little more flexible. It allows us to maximize our attendance funding. And again, students, you know, gives more, more opportunities for parents to assist their students. And so that's the recommendation. I've included the attestation documents for the Texas Education Agency as well as the rubric of how we will be graded. So basically we have to submit a plan that has all of the components of that rubric in it and then TEA will review those plans and score them and we have to meet, we have to, I think we have to get an A% of their requirements in order to be approved and we have until October the 1st to submit that plan. So with your approval this evening, we will, we'll be working on that and I'd like to ask that you pre-approve the submission of the plan and should we have any problems with it, then TEA will notify us and we'll be able to adjust and I can certainly keep you up to speed all along the way. And so that's it.
Okay, thank you. So that was all three items, eight, nine, and 10. Eight having to do with the calendar, nine having to do with stipends, and having to do with the remote construction plan. So, any questions?
Dr. Kincanon. My, my main concern is with the starting date of September 8th. Who in the McLean County Health Department is going to guarantee that in three to four weeks after we start that there will not be an uptick in surge of COVID-19 cases as it has been proven in the past from past three-day, three-day weekends and even some of the protests, it's been a little bit of surge in the number of cases. Is that anyone in the county health department is, are they willing to say that we will not have that happen to us once we start September 8th?
No, I don't think anyone can guarantee anything in terms of the cases for September 8th or any other date for that matter. You know, we're, we'll certainly be monitoring the cases and beginning tomorrow, we'll be having regular meetings with our public health districts. So we'll be in constant communication, no guarantees.
Well, I've looked at a couple of, have you looked at the Fort Bend, ISD, what, Aldine and Houston, a few other places that's saying that they are going to go for the first four to eight weeks that they're going to go virtual because of most of the schools starting on September 8th? Have you, have you looked at anything like that?
Yeah, we've, we've been talking about all of the different options that are available to us. You, you have the ability to start remotely. The state extended that to four weeks without a board resolution. However, I noticed that most of the districts who are exercising that option are districts that are starting in that August 13th, August 18th timeframe and then they're go, they're staying remote, planning to stay remote until September 8th, at which time they plan to come back in person. I did see an article from the Fort Worth area this week that listed a good number of school districts and the, the times, their original start dates and their plans for the fall and most of those were either beginning in the middle of August remotely and then coming back on September the 8th in person or delaying until September 8th altogether. And that seems to be the predominant trend of most of the school districts that I'm seeing across the state. And, and so that, so we've been watching and following. I couldn't speak to Fort Bend or Aldine specifically, but we've been monitoring school districts all across the area and the state.
Okay, and, and my last comment is just to make everyone aware, I, I have nothing against the rest of the, the calendar. I have nothing against the rest of your plan, anything like that, but that September 8th starting date weighs very heavily on my heart. Thank you.
Thank you for that feedback. We, I will tell you, one of the things that, that we want to accomplish is to be as consistent for our families as possible. And those transitions in the spring were hard on our families and so I think families that want in-person instruction have the opportunity to have that beginning with the first day, should we be able to open on September the 8th. And you know that's fluid and we may end up, we may likely end up remote, but we'd like to have the opportunity to see how things develop over the next six weeks before September 8th gets here.
Dr. Kincanon, I, I actually see where Norman's coming from in terms of happening after a holiday, you know, school starting. So I feel like I can understand that concern and, and I guess my question is, if the September 8th start date, would families be able, according to this kind of plan that we have, they'd be able to choose remote instruction, but it has to be for a continuous six-week period? And then if the numbers have gone down, we're not peaking and it seems safe for, for families and they're able to send their kids to school, they can do it then after the six weeks?
Correct. We, so parents, we'll register parents beginning Monday and they will have the ability to change their mind up until two weeks before the start of the school year. And then when they sign up, once school starts, then we're asking them to stay with the same plan for six, a six-weeks grading period. And then they can switch if they want to. And that allows us to, to be able to manage the staffing and to, you know, all of those things that we need to, to do logistically. So those numbers are really important to us, being able to know which kids are doing what. Otherwise it makes, you know, the challenge of figuring out how to, how to manage it would be very difficult for us. But parents have a lot of choice here and, you know, those parents who are wishing to be remote can be, can make that option from day one.
Madam President.
Yes, ma'am.
And it sounds to me like from the original survey that was done a while ago and then just kind of the straw poll that was done with the parent meeting, that you're getting a sense that it's going to be possibly less than half of the families that actually are going to want to start in person on September the 8th. And I think just from listening to the town hall meeting this week and just, you know, a couple of the other, the other comments that I've seen elsewhere, that some of the parents are probably waiting for some security about what the asynchronous model is actually going to look like. You know, I mean, this is, I know we're voting really on doing the model and presenting the model, but having those details for people, especially I know a lot of, there were quite a few questions from working parents, single parents, you know, just about having the flexibility to, to work through that curriculum with their child at home. I think the more assurances there are that that's going to be possible, it's probably going to make those people who are undecided be able to, to make that choice and if what's best for their family in this situation.
Yeah, I think so. And I, you know, I think starting later gives us time to have those conversations with families and so that we're really prepared and that they make informed decisions.
You know, I, I think that, I just really want to commend you and your team for not only having a, having a plan that everybody, that not only can our families see what we're doing, but then, and make a decision about what's best for them, but also for staff. And so we can start working to accommodate our teachers who need to work virtually as well. So I, I applaud you getting this to us and even though you don't have every single detail worked out, it's, it was very apparent to me listening Tuesday night that y'all are being very thoughtful and you're listening. You're listening and trying to include everyone's issues and concerns and into the plan. One thing I will say is we're going to meet again, maybe two more times before September the 8th. And we will know more about our situation then. I'm confident if the health authority, he's apparently got the authority to extend that date from September the 8th to some date further if he thinks it's warranted. And so we have some time. But at least now, in my opinion, folks can plan and make decisions and you guys can work, can start working on all those details. Okay, so we have all three items. I'm, I'm happy to, we can take each one separately if you guys like, or if someone would like to move that we consider items eight, nine, and 10 together, we can do that too. It's up to you guys, whoever wants to make the next motion.
Mr. Manning was speaking, but his mic was off.
Oh, I'm sorry, Norman. Go ahead.
There you go.
I'm sorry, yeah, I would prefer us to vote on them separately, please.
Okay, vote separately. Will do. Okay, so then item eight has to do with the revisions to the 2020, 2021 instructional calendar.
I move that we approve the revised 2021 instructional calendar as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Cordewig.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Houston. Is there any further discussion about calendar as presented?
Angela, just out of curiosity, I kind of thought we granted Dr. Kincanon emergency powers back in the spring to handle a lot of these things. Maybe, I guess, maybe the calendar wasn't included, but.
No, we'd already approved the calendar before all this happened, right?
Yeah, but then we gave her all the list of things that she could do. It doesn't matter.
This, this is a big item and, and I think it would be nice for you all to weigh in on this one.
Yeah, I don't mind you bringing it to us. Now, for all it costs me, I'm happy to vote on it. The, but yeah, I just, I would also tell you, I kind of expect probably to be, we'll probably get to vote on more changes later about this very thing. Or maybe it stays the same. Either way.
Hard to predict, isn't it?
I think so, yeah.
And I just appreciate that we are moving it further down the road just so we have more time to plan and to see what it's going to look like in six weeks. And I mean, I know it's scary and unsure time for a lot of people, but just having a fixed date in mind, I think is, is helpful and I think having it later is also, is also helpful.
All righty then, we ready to vote?
That's my question. Everybody ready? Okay, so those in favor, say aye.
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 Be opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously.
No, I vote against it. No, I vote against it.
Oh, I'm sorry, Norman. I'm so sorry. I'm sorry. It's, probably a show of hands would help me more than listening. Okay. So I have six, four, and one against.
Right.
Motion. Okay. Item nine has to do with stipends for teachers.
I move that we approve the ratification of stipends in support of technology professional development for Waco ISD teachers.
Second.
Cordewig, thank you, Mr. Sykes. Any discussion?
Yes, one, one comment, Madam President.
Yes.
Dr. Ken Cannon, thank you for, I guess, bringing this forward, using your authority that we have provided you to put this plan together because the level of training that we're going to need to do and provide our teachers and compensate them as best we can for this new training that we're undergoing, well, in the spirit of remote training, remote education, that we're going to undergo, I think goes a long way to supporting our teachers that will be providing remote instruction and even elsewhere. I mean, I think long-term, this is certainly money well spent, it's a good plan, and certainly we need to compensate teachers in this difficult time as they do additional training to prepare for this. So I thank you for bringing this forward.
You're very welcome. We've had a good response to the training, I might add. Over five, over 500 teachers on the elementary platform, and the same for the secondary platform, and we're, we're getting good reviews on the, on the professional development, so thank you.
I mean, clearly, giving them the tools to work with and providing them some level of compensation, I think, is a, is a very, very good plan, so.
Thank you.
Did you second the motion, Alan?
I did, yes.
All right. Is there any other comment or question before we vote? Okay. And it'd be helpful if y'all just give me a show of hands. I think that's easier for me than, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Are you in favor of the motion, Carrie?
Oh, yeah.
That's what I thought.
You, what did you ask for? People that were against it or for it?
It passes unanimously.
Okay.
We get one more, one more chance tonight.
I'm having to toggle between the agenda on my browser and the Zoom thing.
His hand is having technological problems.
Right. I'm blaming my wife. Why are you chuckling, Norm? Okay.
Item 10 has to do with the plan. Asynchronous remote instruction plan to TEA. Is there, anybody have any other questions about it? And if not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we pre-approve submission of the asynchronous remote instruction plan and authorize the superintendent to make any related accusations to the Texas Education Agency.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Cordewig. Thank you, Ms. Houston. So I have a motion and a second. Does anybody else have a question or comment about the plan? Now, if you are in favor of the motion, raise your hand. And, okay, if you oppose the motion, raise your hand. So I think, this is hard for me to see everybody, because some of your hands were off, but I think it's six to one again. Mr. Manning is against the plan, everybody else is for it. Correct? Okay. That motion passes as well. Okay, here we are. Mr. DeBeere, help us out here with announcements.
Thank you, Madam President. Just one thing I want to draw your attention to this evening, that's that we have some really talented students and recent graduates who are part of Creative Waco's Safe Waco campaign. They're going to be creating temporary murals around the city to raise awareness of the importance of wearing masks to stop the spread of COVID-19, including some murals that you'll see on the glass outside of the administration building. So great opportunity to showcase the incredible talents that our students, our recent graduates have, and they're joined in that effort by Hope Garrity, who's one of our teachers and whose work for the administrative retreat and the theme for this year you saw earlier tonight. So keep an eye out for those. We're proud of what our students can do. That's it for this evening.
Well, all right. Unless anybody has anything else, I think that's it. We're adjourned.